...for us, just wanted to promote it here because if you haven't heard yet, Joe Christian, who is from Leonier County, I want to say he's seventy-five, somewhere in there. This will be his one thousandth road race. He ran, his first five K he ran was the Flatlander thirty-five years ago. So, he's getting a lot of attention from television and everything, so.
What's his name again?
Joe Christian. The other thing I wanted to share with you was the Georgia Civic Health Index. This is by, by the state, it's not by, not done by county. It's for the state of Georgia. We want to know why civic health matters. A strong civic and strong civic health and strong social ties within communities create better economics, resilience, better public health, and lower violent crimes and youth delinquency. As you can see on the part I passed out to you, where we are the worst in the state of Georgia is volunteering. We rank thirty-four. And I was going to share with you for Community Day, ninety percent of our volunteers came from the Air Force Base. Charitable giving, we rank fortieth. Attending public meetings, thirty-six. Broker registration is pretty low, forty-one. Trusting the people in our neighborhood at forty-four. Contacting elected officials, Georgia ranks thirty-four. And the confidence in public schools is fortieth, but it does say in the rest of this report that that's closer, as you get away from urban areas, that number goes up more. It increases in the urban areas. But this is on the Georgia Family Connection website, if you ever wanted to look at it in more detail. But a couple of other trends that it has in Georgia is civic health generally increases for the state with income, education, and age. The people born between nineteen eighty-one and two thousand and four are the least engaged in civic health. It's also important to note, there was really no difference between white and non-white Georgians and how they participated in civic. And it includes that encouraging trends exist locally. We, as Georgians, engage more with our friends and family than we do with our broader communities and with our state. Any questions? Thank you all, and thank you again for Community Day, I really appreciate it.
Thank you for that, for reporting, hard work. I know that was a big event that you got behind and pushed forward, Community Days. Thank you. And I know Joe's excited about the run. He's all.
He is, you can see him around town running.
Yeah, he's nice to let everybody know what he's, what he is about to accomplish. It's good, it's great.
If I could run that video, I would have.
He's actually ran more than that, but sometimes he, whatever, he didn't count them or whatever, but officially, this is his one thousandth race this year, so congratulations to him as well. All right, let's see. Tony, Donna not being here, do you got anything you want to give us a quick financial report?
I can, and Donna is still out, she's recovering, doing well, so just want to let y'all know that. Oh, but shoot, we weren't able to run a monthly budget, just do, we had a few missing pieces of information that we just weren't able to get, but we will have that for you next. But I did tally up the expenditures for the month of July, and they came out to be two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-four cents, and that is within six percent, well, that is six percent of our budget, which is within the first month's kind of allowance of eight percent, so we're doing well on our expenditures versus our revenues for the first month of July. So hopefully, with Donna's return, we'll be able to get to that financial report.
I guess under general information, you do have the lease?
I do, I have, well, before we go to the lease, in your package, I do have the, we had talked about the two thousand and thirteen L-MIG that y'all voted on, and this is our request for FY fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, nine miles. Our L-MIG allocation for two thousand and fourteen did go up this year to, with our participation, two hundred and forty-nine thousand. The state's portion is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, our thirty percent match, we get two hundred and forty-nine thousand. But I have submitted that, and you know, we'll prepare the packages, and you know, we got good advertisements and that, and all that for you, so.
Any questions on the L-MIG submitted?
The next thing we do have is, is in your package, you have a copy of the proposed lease agreement between Leonier County and Patent Seed Company for property for a new fire station. Basically, a quarter of an acre. Suzanne, I think you actually drafted that up, you're, you're good with it?
I think Thomas also reviewed it.
So he is needing to adopt or accept or make a motion to move forward with the lease of the fire station?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the lease? Second?
Second.
Further discussion on the lease and proposed fire station to be built? All in favor?
I'm opposed.
All right, we'll get that one signed. Have you got the original? Or does it matter?
Does it matter? I can redo one.
I got this one.
Okay.
Just to lay it all ripped up a little bit. That's boldy one, man. Think this is better. All right, and yeah, Tony, I guess is that everything there except for?
Yeah, that is the only other thing I was going to advise. We did have one with the work of the company, minor, even substantial. That was all.
All right, anybody got anything for Tony? Suggestions, complaints, or needs from him, or anybody else? That's good. You got Albert here, returning to give us a zoning update, or talk about a request? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. We have a public hearing, I don't have a problem without anybody here. The planning commission recommended approval of twenty-nine point six acres on Dash, on Boyett Road and Highway one-twenty-two, on the east side of that, right adjacent, just right before you get to the new convenience store. They wanted to go from AU to PD, wanted to set one acre out, but out for a commercial establishment, and the rest of them will be single-family, the rest of acres will be used for single-family. Of course, they'll have to have a community well and water system approved by the state, and the planning commission did not have a problem with it, they voted unanimously to approve it, and of course, that comes to the commissioners on the old store. And the company that's wanting it done is Flag Development LLC.
Now, are you asking us to consider that a day, or are we just getting?
That's the way we, that's the way we've been.
Right, I just. Normally, we're just trying to have the minutes, a copy of the minutes from that meeting to proceed to move forward.
Okay, I'm moving now.
Okay. That's the way I, that's the way we've been doing it. I mean, well, yeah, I mean, I didn't know you had that. That's early agreement. Tony, you got a question?
No, along with, the only other thing, though, Albert is, he did advertise for ten-thirty, so we need to, he needed approval, you know.
Oh, okay, oh, we gotta have a hearing today.
Right, the hearing today.
That's why I said, so, but I don't see anybody here that's objecting or for it or against it, I mean, that's reasonable.
They will.
We want a second session, then we'll.
Well, and what y'all can do is, you could have proven it out and support pending the results of the hearing, and if there was nobody, no objection or anything, we would have a grievance being nothing, so that would be appropriate, but if y'all were in agreement as to his pending the outcome, it's a hearing.
Do we have anything?
I don't have anything.
You advertised it for ten-thirty?
Yeah, that's what I've always advertised it for.
I guess under old business, we could move on, and I don't know, we could make ten-thirty, but, let's see, you got an update about millage?
I do, that's on down on the, on the, yeah, I mean, we can go on into that.
Right, unless we find a guy named executive, I don't know. We don't have anything on loss negotiations, no court papers due?
The, under the old business, the budget program, you know, we have voted to adopt the budget, and got with Tax Commissioner, and you know, I think I talked with all of you about the millage rate currently stands at fifteen point eight-five-oh, and with revenues collected, we were going to roll it back to fifteen point eight-four-six. We advertised in the paper the five-year history of that, you know, basically had no comments on that, so now, we recommend that we do adopt the rollback rate of fifteen point eight-four-six instead of fifteen point eight-five-oh. And that will get us set on the rate in our budget for two thousand and fourteen.
This one makes the, the three hearings?
The need for the three hearings and everything, right. We were going to hold it at fifteen point eight-five-oh, we would have had to have three hearings and advertisements over a period, that's what we're laying, sending out to the tax businesses. So we satisfied all those requirements.
You're just asking us to approve the millage rate of fifteen point eight-four-six?
And basically means a reduction of about six hundred and eighty dollars in revenues.
All right, did I have a motion to adopt the millage?
That's what we're doing, too.
Properly made a motion, there a second? Please, please get a second. All right, Scott's got a second, any further discussion on the millage rate? Motion, all in favor, they're going to approve that?
I don't know.
All right, opposed, none? Okay. Anything else?
I could give you, you were talking about any complaints or anything like that, I have been getting quite a few calls coming in about our junk in front of the highways, whether the residences are dilapidated, mobile homes, you know, things like that. So, so we do have an ordinance in place, you know, so I'm wanting to start addressing some issues there, and, you know, make first contact with the property owners individually, you know, hopefully receive a favorable response from that, and before we have to basically send out some notices, but those are one things that I have, you know, and becoming new, I don't know if that's, if that's kind of consistent with the pattern that we've had in the past, or if it's just something that people are starting to recognize. So, anyway, I just, yes, I want to prepare y'all to, when we do start making those phone calls and start sending out those notices, because there is, you know, there is a, is a fine in there, and I've gotten with our magistrate court probate, and you know, if we do send, and we do elect a fine, there is a fine associated with that. I hope it doesn't get to that point.
Right, and you're, you, we discussed that you would normally make a phone call for a, a person or taxpayer, know that there was a problem, or there was a complaint, and then you would follow it up with a letter that you've tweaked a little bit from the one we've been using, and put a little better language in there about the punishment, or possible punishment, if things aren't cleaned up.
Was that a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine?
Yeah, it begins with no less than two-hundred-and-fifty and no more than five-hundred, and it is a misdemeanor if they're wrong before the court, so I mean, that's, that's pretty severe, you know, and certainly a property owner, we'd want that.
Pretty much most of the ones that you're getting calls on, or the ones we've been getting calls on, and we've made contact with them, and we've.
Yeah.
You know, tried to be nice and ask them to clean it up and have, and still we're getting ignored, I guess.
Correct. There's one, there's one that's been, one of the main problems that Albert has dealt with for probably a little over a year, and he'd say, yeah, clean that, he'd go out there and he'll fix a little something, and in a few weeks, it's right back down.
Yeah, and, and we have had, and I am familiar with that location, we have had a few more and a few new ones to come up, you know, I don't know. So, and somehow, I've identified myself, just riding around, you know, riding up and down, get familiar with county, and certainly, you know, we're, we're going to respond to as we did, I just, you know, double anybody that needs targeting or signaling them out because there are, you know, we'll address them all.
Do we, do we address it on our own, or do we wait until we have a complaint?
Well, on some of them, we do take proactive, that's why I say I've seen some, you know, typically, you know, we'll have some in-house, just as we, because various county employees are out about riding, whether it's taxes, or whether, you know, road crew, or whatever. But a lot of them are just complaints coming into the courthouse, and those are typically, I think, the ones that have been in the past, that we just try to address, and really, they'll, they'll come in compliance for a little bit, but then they tend to let it get back to the same shitty. And, and it is kind of specific, the ordinance is specific, you know, it does not cover grass height or anything like that. A lot of people want to address that concern, but that's not in the ordinance, mainly junk vehicles, you know, metal appliances, you know, any type of scrap.
Was that ordinance, did it come from the regulation of the planning commission to then, or did the commissioner just?
Commissioner's just, only initiative did it.
Was there any, was there any reason we should look at the height of grass or anything that would not be overlooked?
Typically, I mean, you know, and, and that could be something, as we look into it further, you know, typically, you'll have that more in your, in your residential neighborhoods where you have undeveloped lots and all that, because, you know, you could get into some issues with fields and stuff like that, you know, that are, you know, you'd have to have some pretty specific language, but I mean, some of the instances that I am looking into as far as the grass are, in some neighborhoods, you know, that it is unsightly, and it does cause some concern for, you know, overgrowth, and right next to a, to a residence, so it would have to be.
There's some, and some of the subdivisions too, that are open waste site.
Yeah, some vacant lots and stuff.
Well, there's one that they had fixed a little pavilion, and it was going to be more of a community thing, and I wouldn't drive a tractor out there, so it's, so that I.
So, Alex, I mean, what you, you know, what you're saying is, it may be that we do need to address that, we just have to need to be kind of, you know, specific here, language.
Yes, a lot, a lot of times I know, on some, I was getting some complaints in subdivisions, I'd just call the owner, and a lot of times, the owner would go ahead and blow it, a lot of times, they don't realize it's there because they are, and now, especially when they've got some vacant lots, and they're sitting out on either side of the lot. I'd just make a phone call, and once, if there was one or two occasions, they would come in over here and move it, and that would help out.
I guess the only other.
We talked about that.
Yeah, Tony may call you for some phone numbers or something, to help, help out with that process. But I guess the other thing we still got to do, and two things you might get, maybe, are we looking at memorandum with the city or something, understanding on the animal control, or what, right, I know they wanted something in writing, and is that the easiest?
Yeah, we, we, we're looking at a draft, we're just going to check on some.
We actually have received a draft from the city, and Suzanne's drafted similar, so we're merging the two documents together, and.
Well, we just mainly just want them to know we're working, I mean, we are working on it, so that.
Yes.
That arrangement would stay.
Yeah, and, and we currently do have, you know, we do have that understanding with the city now, so I mean, we are supplying that need, of course, we just don't have the, the signed MOU in effect, but hopefully, we'll be able to get that to the city and to the county.
Getting back to that issue, and I had talked with Tony about it, I have received a couple of complaints about responding to animal control call, and Tony said, because we don't actually have this agreement yet, you know, we can't, we put a lot of pressure on the issue, and then we get this addressed, but.
Haven't received some.
I think I had those calls, well, and there was a borderline or something that busted on one occasion, that the city was needing everybody to help with that situation in one instance, but, you know, we need that memorandum so that we can have a better everything.
Yeah, and once we do get, talk to Suzanne about sitting down with, with, you know, our money going through the MOU with, with the city and him and us, and, you know, making sure he's, he's aware, you know, that it is, both city and county, and what expectations we're showing. So, yeah, we've made some progress on that.
Anything else?
We were talking about it before, that's on, grass and whatever, sure, we more or less could have noticed in it, that it's fixing to be in effect, and, or it is in effect, and they need to comply or something.
We don't have an ordinance, we don't have an ordinance.
No, but our other ordinance, you know, about junk and all that, but I want to tell everybody, know that there is an ordinance, and they need you.
Just remind them.
Yeah.
Like a couple of names, maybe a little.
And that may go a long way to address those people that we haven't gotten the calls on yet, that we're a week away from getting those calls, and, yeah, I mean, that would certainly, I think, be beneficial to say, just want to remind the citizens.
We all want to support putting that, add in the paper. Somebody want to make a motion to do that?
I will.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm opposed.
Well, just let everybody know it's coming, and maybe get ahead of it, clean it up.
If it's in the paper, maybe they won't be quite as surprised, outraged, or something, if somebody calls and say, hey, you're going to need to clean this up, and we fixed a fine, or it's in the paper, or you've had a chance to look at it.
It looks like we've been out here for ten years now. And, and we do hear that a lot, but, you know, that's where, you know, you know, that's the problem we're standing on. That, I think that'd go a long way.
And I guess if, in our office, this time, gets a good checkup, needs to be?
Yeah, I think she's got a follow-up appointment this, this fourteenth, which is, is that Wednesday, then hopefully, if she gets a good, good report, she'll be back Thursday.
Maybe we wish her, way up with her checkup, maybe she can return and get back in that swing of things.
And, and we certainly have a necessary, but I will, like I said, it's where we come, it's coming, I will take this moment to commend Patty and Sherry out of the registrar's office for helping out, you know, they have done a great job in maintaining that we're paying our bills, we're meeting payroll, and keeping the daily office functions going, because I tell you, you just never know if you're going to receive a call about, I mean, it's, anything and everything, and directing them to the appropriate office, and also meeting the people that come in, that just sort of walk-ins, you know, we have had some new businesses, licenses, which is good, a couple of contractors have come in and signed up for new business, but they have done a great job in keeping that office flowing, rolling while it's been out, so I just want to come in here for that, and Patty is our part-time clerk, that will be a part in there to help us.
Well, thank you, Patty. Yeah, you been over here for how long?
About a month, just started working with the, about a month, I'm real enjoying it.
What you've done, that was kind of a rush thing, but.
But I was happy.
Well, good, yeah. Anybody, I guess citizens' comments or questions or suggestions?
Do you follow up with advanced disposal about what I called you about?
Yes, I did, and they were actually going to send me a contract, and I believe that's signed, and they said that they shouldn't be invoking, Gary had asked about, I think it was, they were going to only charge five dollars for.
Yeah, they, they were supposed to charge for a second cans, and I was, when I got my new bill, it was actually higher.
Yeah.
Just a little lower.
I, I, I mean, I didn't specifically ask about your bill, but they said it should be in line with, so check your next bill, make sure that it is.
I'll, I'll wait for the next one, I pay it every three months, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
He said he was going to look into it, but I mean, it should be in accordance to what look at.
I was understanding they would drop the fuel surcharge for the second can, because the truck's already there. He just said all they would charge would be five dollars, but I didn't catch, they're charging the full rate.
Yeah.
For the second can.
And that should be.
As you put.
Who did, who did you talk with, the fans, if you don't mind?
The guy in Jacksonville.
What was your name?
Yeah, I got to look back.
I've got a, I've got a, I'll give you another contact.
Yeah, if that was, they, they came, and if we renewed the contract a little bit earlier, they were going to give us some consideration for all the, for that second.
Well, I always thought it was wrong, you know, to charge a fuel surcharge for a second can, when the truck's parked there picking up the first one.
Right.
I mean, but this guy said that, yeah, they should only be charging five dollars for an extra can, but when I got my bill, it's still just like it always was. As a matter of fact, it was higher than it was before.
Okay. Does anybody got anything?
In the future, if I'm out there, I'll be sorry to run.
We need a place in the county to shoot, we've got all these kids in 4H that are doing real good in the state, we could use a rifle range, and I don't know where it could be done on county-owned property, or maybe somebody, a gun club, lease the property from the county, but a safe place to shoot, and I'm not talking about people like these two men, you know, but it would probably cut down on some vandalism like y'all have experienced.
I've had several people ask me about that.
I had to say, and we kind of, from, I'm the honorary commander of the eight-twentieth, which is basically your special forces of the military, and I had it set up with two snipers from the eight-twentieth, and we was going to present it in front of the Chamber of Commerce, and the day that we was going to present it in front of the Chamber of Commerce, two days before Sandy Hook happened, and they didn't feel like it would be appropriate from their commander not to bring it up, for what they, working with them, and they have since after, had been transferred to Afghanistan, so we just kind of lost a little bit of momentum, that, I can take the blog responsibility on that, so I may as should have kept pushing it, but this is the research, kind of a nutshell of what I found. The NRA will come in, if we have a designated spot, now they want at least a thousand yards, and I've had two or three people riding around the county looking, trying to find a place designated, that will have a thousand yards that you could fire. They'll come in and set up the gun range and maintain it for five years, but someone has to have ownership of it.
Can it be a private owner?
It can be a private owner, it can be county, they don't care who it is, but what they want to do is have, number one, have a place for people to go and shoot firearms, remember that, that's what they're about, and as we grow, we're losing more and more, I guess you'd say, country, to where, a lot of people from Moody, guns have really, gun sales are up like ninety percent, more and more people are buying them, and if you go down to the river on any given Saturday or Sunday. And if you go down to the river on any given Saturday or Sunday, when everybody's down there, there's always somebody down there discharging guns, shooting bottles, putting glass in the river. And that was probably what this project was going to do, was try to help alleviate some of that and take that. If you got a designated place, you can go shoot, and shoot safely, they won't be at the river shooting bottles in the river, they'll be there shooting targets. And then if you had, the reason I thought maybe the Chamber of Commerce would be good is if they have these shooting tournaments, they have one, I think, like a circuit, they could be here once a month, and it would bring people into the town.
Yeah.
But the main thing, but it's a great idea that you, you know, that you thought about, but it's just finding a place to do it that would accommodate, I guess, what you would have to have to make the savings.
That would probably help your ordinance enforcement, if you could say, well, you can go to this place and shoot.
That location will be important, and it'll probably be some, somebody difficult, just because the noise, I live close enough to the river where they shoot out there all the time. And even though it's a long way from my house, it doesn't seem like it's a long way at all, day, Sunday. So that's something that, when you find that place, it's going to need to...
Well, just talking to people, there's a ton of places, it would be an ideal and perfect place, but there's going to be that one person or when it's, you know, starts to come up.
But since it's already been going on out there, and that might be, you know, people are used to it being a lot of shots, or guns shot out there, and that might be... Who would oversee it? Is that the NRA?
The NRA will come in and set it up, and they'll maintain it for five years.
Who will oversee it after they leave, I forget, so?
Well, I mean, it's just, I mean, in my vision of it is a gun range, and I've seen, I've seen two of them pop up when this whole thing started, I've seen two of them pop up in surrounding counties. And, I mean, I envision it as just a nice place to prop up, that you could set targets at different ranges, and not necessarily somebody there all the time, it's kind of like...
A safe place to shoot your gun at.
I have to get the dimensions on exactly what it is. The main, the main problem that I've seen is they like, for these rifle, people who shoot rifles in tournaments, Walt Branch is a big one, he travels around and does it. They like to have a thousand yards, which is pretty good ways. But they come in, they put up the burn rooms, the pits, and they just want it to be NRA sanctioned where they can use it for a tournament. And Moody was real, I mean, they, the guys at Eight Twentieth said that they have to travel to Camp Blenheim, almost to Jackson, to be able to shoot some of their, what, their sniper rifles, you know, when they're not at work, just to practice, to go, you know, discharge firearms. And I think that's ninety percent of what you have down at the river, is disposed for Moody. These AR-14s and AR-